And Council Martinez will lead us in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Folks, if you are all here to make citizen comments, there are sign up sheets in the back if you could please pull out a card and give it to me before the citizen comments time. Thank you.
Nita, would you call roll?
Councilor Lorenz?
Here.
Councilor Schlebach?
Here.
Councilor Martinez?
Here.
Mayor Protem Schrader?
Here.
Mayor Garcia will not be here tonight, according to Ms. DeClare.
Next item on the agenda is the approval of a consent agenda.
I move to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
Any discussion? Nita?
Councilor Lorenz?
Aye.
Councilor Schlebach?
Aye.
Councilor Martinez?
Aye.
Mayor Protem Schrader?
Aye.
Motion carries?
At this time, we have some certificates of appreciation for your service to the city for John Martinez and Brendan Gallegos.
One, two, three. Okay, thank you.
At this time, we will open the meeting to citizens' comments if anybody has a comment they'd like to make at this time. Well, I think we'll...
What's that?
Further down the agenda, Barbara.
Okay.
Thank you. The next item on the agenda is liquor license renewals. First one is for China Garden. Are there any issues?
No, ma'am. We also have run the reports from the police department and there have been no complaints on any of the liquor license renewals for tonight.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Do I hear a motion to approve the liquor license renewal for China Garden?
I move to approve the liquor license for Juan Enterprises LLC doing business as China Garden Chinese Restaurant at 819 First Avenue.
Second.
Nita, would you call roll?
Councilor Lorenz?
Aye.
Councilor Martinez?
Aye.
Councilor Schrader?
Aye.
Councilor Schlebach?
Aye.
Motion carries?
Moving on to Rio Bravo Liquor.
I move to approve the liquor license renewal for Rio Bravo Liquor to be executed at 1120 Park Avenue, Montevista.
Second.
Nita?
Councilor Lorenz?
Aye.
Councilor Martinez?
Aye.
Councilor Schlebach?
Aye.
Mayor Protem Schrader?
Aye.
Motion carries?
Okay, the next item on the agenda is a budget amendment for 2017.
One more liquor license.
Oh, pardon?
One more liquor license for Baldos.
Hold up, I'm sorry. Got it. Excited. Okay, do I hear a motion to approve a liquor license for Baldos?
I move to approve the liquor license renewal for Baldos Restaurant to operate on 1100 Park Avenue, Montevista, Colorado.
Second.
Councilor Lorenz?
Aye.
Councilor Schlebach?
Aye.
Councilor Martinez?
Aye.
Mayor Protem Schrader?
Aye.
Motion carries?
The next item is a budget amendment for 2017.
Good evening. So, I think, I don't know if you guys have had a chance to look at this, but the bottom line is we're, the adjustment to the general fund is going to be a decrease of approximately $48,000 in revenue. There's a lot of different line items that, you know, we won't go into detail, but the adjustment to the expenditures is $47,685. And my estimate surplus for the year is $10,342. I feel that these numbers are definitely, that we'll, definitely will be able to attain these amounts as long as we don't have any unexpected breakdowns of equipment or buildings that need some major repair. These are, these are definitely doable numbers. So, we've worked really hard to get stuff back into line with, with what we, you know, what we want to do. And kind of, I think the surplus was about $11,000 with the original budget, so I think we're in pretty good shape. So, does anybody have any questions?
Do you have a question, Jason?
No, I don't.
Just to, to kind of tell you, you know, when we had our budget session in June, there were some things in there that, you know, we had some flexibility to remove some items in the expenditures, and so that's kind of what we've done to kind of bring it back into line. So, that's why we were able to, to get it back to surplus rather than a huge deficit.
Very good.
Yeah.
Any other questions for Heather? Do I hear a motion to approve?
I'd just like to state that we have worked the budget to make it work for this year. We did, we kind of didn't maybe quite have the best budget plan out when we started last year, and I feel like it's, we managed to make it work, and I also feel like we as council definitely need to make sure that we're aware of what's going on and make sure that we, we do take a closer look at this year's budget. And also, I'd just like to ask the department heads to make sure that you're keeping a close eye on that budget because we are tightening down. We're, we're going to tighten down the bill. We're going to ask everybody to not spend quite as much money simply because we have to, we have to come in under a budget. We can't continue dipping into our savings account because it's just that, a savings account, and at some point in time, that's going to run dry. And we have to make sure that we're being accountable for the dollars that we spend because those are not our dollars, those are everybody's dollars, and we got to make sure that we're taking care of them responsibly and ethically. And I definitely just ask that all the department heads keep that in mind when they go about looking at their budgets.
Anybody else? Forrest, do you have anything you'd like to say?
Well, Madam Mayor Protem, I mean, Heather and I worked a lot on this, and I think that we do have things, things all lined out here for a mid-year amendment, and barring unforeseen circumstances on a major level, we should be able to attain this. You know, we have had discussions in management team meetings about, you know, cost containment for the rest of the year, and we've also begun having staff discussions about budgeting for next year, and we're looking forward to that process with the council. Obviously, we will continue to take that conservative approach, and, you know, I, I think we can do that within the same kind of parameters we had this year, kind of a zero sum, you know, break even deal because clearly our reserves are, they're okay. In a perfect world, they would begin increasing, and we have been moving in that direction over the last three years where our expenditures have gone down and actually, in anticipation of a ballot question, Heather did some work today, you know, and over the last five years, we have actually only increased city spending by 2.9%, which is pretty good, honestly. And if you look at the first two years of that, that was larger, and we've reduced it each year through the efforts of the council and staff, and so I feel pretty positive about this. When I was first here, we did not do mid-year budget amendments, and, you know, that was a program that, that I brought in because I think it's always good to see where you're at in the middle of the year, and, you know, clearly we had some issues, and I think we resolved those not to really any detriment, and I appreciate the council's efforts on that. You know, we did run into a large expense item recently, but hopefully we don't have anything of that large of nature. I mean, we can't guarantee that, but things seem to be in, in pretty good shape, so I hope you'll pass this resolution tonight, and we'll keep moving forward, and we'll start working with the council on budget. Probably the first workshop in October will actually be, you know, we'll get you some information before that and then actually start to sit down and, and go through, as we've discussed, needs, and then the ones will be over somewhere there, yeah, maybe out of reach, but, you know, we are seeing, one of the things that is in this amendment is a slight uptick in sales tax revenue, and that's good, that, that bodes well that we are getting some more sales tax, but it's not at a hugely robust amount where you can go, wow, that's, it's awesome, but it is, it's a good sign. I know downtown this weekend, and, you know, my Quincy's was, on Friday, there was a line, and I hear it Saturday, same thing, so they're doing really good business down there, and that's great, and, you know, we have some other new businesses and some people we're talking to, so all that helps, but it's a slow line, it's one of those kind of flat-looking curves going up a little bit, it's nothing drastic at this point. Thanks.
Thank you, Heather.
Thank you.
So, are we ready to vote? Nita? I'm sorry, Jason.
No, I'm, I'm fine.
Nita, would you call roll?
We have a motion.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Nita, would you just mind, do you know what the resolution number is for this?
It is 2000, or, excuse me, 08-2017.
I move to approve resolution number 082017, a resolution approving an amended budget and appropriation of funds for the calendar year 2017 to authorize expenditure revenue for general fund, urban renewal fund, capital improvement fund, and capital projects fund.
Second.
Councilor Lorenz?
Aye.
Councilor Martinez?
Aye.
Councilor Schlebach?
Aye.
Mayor Protem Schrader?
Aye.
Motion carries?
Thank you, Nita. At this time, we will discuss the submission of a ballot question to voters allowing marijuana establishments and the imposition of tax on sales of marijuana products. And I am aware that there's a, Planning and Zoning is here, and they would like to speak to that.
If we could. So, we know, while we're here, so down the center, Karen had asked us if we had anything to add due by Tuesday. Sorry. We kind of researched a little bit farther and came up with this information yesterday, and a little bit more today, but with the ballot questions separate, if one passes and the other doesn't, so let's say the marijuana issue passes but the tax doesn't, we have now allowed marijuana in the city limits, and we're not going to get a tax off of it. So, we were originally told because of Tabor, we couldn't separate the two. Looking further into it, you can mix them, and Crestone actually did, and I brought a copy of what their ballot question looked like, and it was a combination.
With the marijuana question first, followed by the tax question, so that...
All in one.
They, they have an "and" separating the two issues, but it's all one ballot question, but then, but then people are presented first with the marijuana, so they're not just reading the tax question, and, you know, some people just check no, I think, when they read increasing taxes, and so...
And we could still keep our 18% that we talked about, the $500,000 in the first year, but if you put the two together, we're going to keep the tax with the marijuana if it passes.
Separating seems kind of frightening, I guess.
So, that was our concern, and we thought, now's the time to bring it up, so, yeah. We apologize, it wasn't by Tuesday.
Well, actually, Tuesday was to discuss, and we're going to, we're going to be able to work on that other, or, don't, don't worry.
Okay. So, if you would just think about it, consider it, that's what we asked of them.
Well, and you guys are absolutely right in that because, what, if you look up in South or vice versa, some of the, the taxing initiative passed but marijuana failed, so...
And it was okay that way.
Yeah.
But we just kind of hate to have the two separated, so, just kept thinking about it and looking things up, and the more we looked, we found stuff, so, that's all.
Okay, well, thank you. So, clearly, Planning and Zoning is still fine tuning an ordinance to be, or not an ordinance, but a question for the ballot.
And so, Madam Mayor Protem, we can take a look at that, and, you know, the city attorney can review that. We do have time, if you wish to table this resolution this evening. The city clerk and I were just discussing this, so at the September 7th city council meeting, that would be the last available date, the scheduled before election, because it has to be to the county by the 8th. So, the question, the city attorney can review that at the council's direction, see if those can be co-joined. I'm certain that Crestone did it that way, so make sure that that was fully proper, if you will, sorry, you know, from a legal review standpoint, and then we could re-present this question with that information at that meeting, if, if that's the council's desire.
Any wishes of council?
I would definitely feel more comfortable with the two questions together if, if that's within the legal bounds, of course, and I definitely like to make sure, do our own due diligence before we take that step, and so I would move to table this issue until the September 7th council meeting.
Nita?
Council Lorenz?
So, and, and just, just to make sure that, can we get, say, you know, how soon can we get a draft, and like, no, just because I, I mean, if, if the submission has to be on the 8th, you know, I want to make sure that we have pretty much everything we can because if we don't get it on the 7th, we're in a little bit of a crunch.
Right.
I will have them.
Okay.
If, if that's what you want, my understanding, my, my, my direction, at least that I understood, was that you wanted two questions.
Right.
Do you want me to now put it all together?
If, if it's legal, I think.
Follow that form that you're crestone used.
Great, I will, I will have, I'll, I'll do that one too, and, and it's the res, whichever resolution at your pleasure, and I will have that too well in advance of the 7th.
We could have just put the tax question up, and once you know that, then you can decide what to do next year. You left it wide open, Joe, you don't have to, it's going to be decided later. There is a motion on the floor, though, and it has been seconded.
So, do you want to reword your...
I just moved the table, that's all I did.
So, where are we at in directing the city attorney?
Well, so, Madam Mayor Protem, you do have a motion on the floor, and a second, and you have some conversation, if there's, you know, either there's more conversation on the part of the council, or you both.
Yes, Mr. Poston?
Is it legal for me to ask a question? At the bottom of page one on the resolution, it does say to request the voter...
Excuse me, Mr. Poston, could you, first, how do you...
Come for it.
Thank you, sir.
I noticed that at the bottom of page one on the resolution, it does state the voters, request the voters to approve, approve an increase in taxes, et cetera, et cetera, should the voters determine that manual marijuana facilities of any type should be allowed within the city. Does that cover what we're trying to address with the two questions?
Um, no, sir. Well, and if I could answer that, Madam Mayor Protem, no, it doesn't because it still creates a separation between the questions, the, those are, whereas of the resolution. So, they, they still, at this point, remain as separate questions because that's just the language of the resolution.
Okay.
The voters would see the questions, the ballot issue one and ballot issue two, so that doesn't resolve the, the issue that was brought up.
Well, and, and with that, too, you have to list, like, what your anticipated revenues are for, for off of that increase, because then with Tabor, if you go over that amount, it has to get refunded back to the taxpayers, and so you have to outline specifically the, the tax rate, the increase, the amount of revenue generated in, and all of that, and that has to be documented, unfortunately.
Okay, thank you, everybody.
Thank you. Any other comments?
Aye.
Councilor Martinez?
Aye.
Councilor Schlebach?
Aye.
Mayor Protem Schrader?
Aye.
Motion carries to table?
Thank you, Nita. Moving on to city manager's report.
Okay, most of the things in my report are pretty self-evident, we already dealt with the budget amendment issue, we all participated in police chief interviews last night, appreciate your time, and the community that came out to participate in that as well. One thing I did want to add for you this evening is, so, we're all aware, I informed the council that Boutique Air would be using our airport, and those flights actually begin ostensibly Monday, might, the first one might be Sunday night, but on Monday and Tuesday, they will be flying their full schedule out of Montevista, and I had mentioned to the council that, you know, we should do something to enhance experience of our visitors and, and welcome Boutique Air, and so what we've done is we actually had some T-shirts made that say, "Fly Monte" on the back, and they've got a plane in the mountains this August 2017, and our plan is the first deplaning at 8:45 that morning, we're going to be present, myself and Azarel, and we can give, the aircraft can only have eight to nine passengers by FAA regulations, so we're going to give those folks T-shirts, and then the next flight out is half an hour later, and we're going to give those people T-shirts. And so I'd invite any one of the council, if you'd like to come to that, you know, it'd be kind of a fun thing, actually told Matt from Boutique Air that we're doing that, and he was really excited and thought, you know, felt very welcome, he already did, but he's like, wow, that's really kind of cool, and we're excited about sending T-shirts to Denver. I mean, obviously, a lot of the passengers are locals, and, and that's fine, that will be a collector's item one day, it's a limited edition. You know, we've asked the newspaper to come, and, and we just think it's, it's just a good opportunity to welcome people, and I will tell you that just by doing this, it's created a lot of conversation about our airport, some aspects of that, that I learned a couple new things from some of our airport board members, I've had our local pilots, mostly ag-related, you know, some of them called me, we've had some good discussions, they're all kind of excited about it, and it's led to some other, you know, potential things that we could do with the airport from economic development. I wasn't aware that the east side is actually non-aviation, so it has the opportunity, it's not zoned, to have industrial applications and those kind of things, which I've had a conversation with Marty and Bonnie Haslam about that, so it, it's kind of exciting, and I feel like there's a little traction, the airport board members are all very supportive, so if you have time Monday morning, you know, stop out, we're going to do that, and it should be, it should be fun, so we'll be out there and kind of showing a flag, and, and the T-shirts are cool, Azarel threw together a design, I was like, wow, that's great, so, we have, they're being printed in Monta, the shirts are being made in Montevista as well, so, I don't know if you all have any other questions for me this evening, but that's what I've got.
Are we sure the T-shirts are TSA-approved?
Well, you know, the only way they're going to find out is their screening and numbers, so the folks that go back, well, I guess we'll find out. All right, thank you.
Thank you. Karen?
Thank you. Good evening, everyone. My report's pretty short, I've just been working on the marijuana ordinance, and apparently I'll be working on it some...
Can you speak up, please?
Sure, I've just been working on the marijuana ordinance, and now I'll be working on an additional ballot question for you guys, a resolution for next week, so, any questions for me tonight?
Have you gotten any update on, like, our, our shank file in, in the shank case and anything?
We have an ordinance. I had sent, I believe, an updated memo to you all, I want to say it was maybe a month ago. Did we hire a new code enforcement officer?
Yes, so, in that regard, if I could jump in there, so we do have a new code enforcement officer starting roughly the first of September, so as soon as he's got his feet wet, that will be one of his first tasks. We're going to co-train him with the police department on that, on the new officer, and I'm going to take him through our side of the, of the work, so, you know, I'm anticipating by the third week of September or fourth, depending on how everything's going, that we'll begin to address that particular code problem, and obviously, there's quite a few, this young man's going to be busy, to say the least.
Any other questions? Okay, thank you.
Stephanie?
Yeah.
Okay, so, Crestone?
Oh, great, thank you so much, I appreciate that.
I apologize, I don't remember your name, but I'm sure you're here in place of interim chief who had an appointment in Denver tomorrow, so was unable to attend the meeting tonight. Would you like to speak to the report, or...
You mean, nothing to...
Okay, anything to add to? Alrighty, thank you. Mr. Vance?
Believe it or not, I don't have any, sure, a whole lot to report tonight.
Goodness, we better write this date.
I know it.
You have my written report in your packet, just a couple of points that I'd like to, our two seasonal parks employees left us here last week, I just wanted to call out the... I just wanted to call out their names for public record. Justin Johnson and Caleb Cotton, both did an exceptional job for us. They're highly, high-quality young men, so very proud to have them on staff. I'm sorry to see them go, but I know they're heading off to bigger and better things, so very proud of those two young men. Other than that, I did go ahead and authorize Ferris Machinery to start the repairs on our Merwe Wind Sweeper, so that's in the works. I will be bringing my next session here with my staff report, which will be the last meeting in September. I will bring counsel a couple, probably four, different options for different sweeping operations that you could direct me to go ahead and pursue, to try to save that sweeper and buy some more time with it. So I'll have that ready, I'll have maps and kind of outline everything for you. Okay, and I'll probably do it on a PowerPoint so the public can see as well. So other than that, on staffing, good news, our employee that's been on medical leave has been cleared and will be starting work again on a limited basis on Monday, so we're happy to have him back. So other than that, I'll open it up if you have any questions for me. All right, thank you.
Thank you. City clerk?
Good evening.
Good evening.
So I've been extremely busy with court and liquor license and elections coming up. I did an orientation on the 7th that evening. We had, had roughly eight people there, four people picked up packets. I've created 15 packets and out of those 15 packets, I only have three packets left. So it seems like people are pretty interested in that.
Thank you.
You're welcome. So it'll be interesting to see what comes in. That deadline is, for petition is on the 8th, or excuse me, the 28th, that I have to have petitions of August.
I have to ask them.
So that's what's been happening with the election part of it. I have been working with the courts. Courtney and I and Forrest will be doing interviews next Wednesday for a deputy clerk. The deputy clerk is going to basically have more administrative duties. I am going to train that person to do court and to do liquor license, kind of be my backup in everything. So that's, that's my project moving forward next week is we're going to do that. And then for court, this last week, we had 72 cases in the last two weeks and the judge has issued 12 bench warrants for failure to appear. And out of those bench warrants, right now, we've only had two that have been picked up. And with the offense, they actually are, they are sitting in jail at the moment until the 5th of September. So most of the bench warrants, the judge has been issuing a PR bond, so to keep our costs down as well with the jails. Other than that, just treading water, staying, keeping my head above it. Any questions or anything I can answer for you?
Questions? Thank you. Okay.
Jim would like to apologize for his absence, he had a minor medical emergency to attend to. So the full report is in your packet. A couple of things I'd like to point out were, we finished the lock project throughout city hall. The manufacturer of the lock recognized some issues with the original set that was sent to us, so they sent seven additional locks at no extra cost. So the parts from the old ones can be used for the new ones if we have any issues with that, so that helps out quite a bit. We've had some shuffling around of computers in city hall, so we're able to use some of the computers that we had from positions that are no longer open. We were able to cycle out some of the computers that were prepared for a five-year replacement with those computers, so that we saw some cost savings in that. Lastly, we were able to establish a video link between the municipal court here and the Rio Grande County Jail along with the Alamosa County Jail. So it's been able to avoid having to transport and saved a lot of time, we found in those instances. If you have any other questions, I'm open to answer anything that you have. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Allison?
I would just like to see if the rest of the council agrees with, well, first and foremost, I'd like to thank Rob for the job that he did as acting city manager. I think it was an outstanding job and we are definitely in your debt for that and we really appreciate it. However, there is a conflict of interest there with the city manager managing the day-to-day operations of the city clerk. And it, even, even though I recognize that everybody's professional, everybody does their job well, we still have the appearance of a conflict there. And I feel like it, we need to potentially restructure our succession plan in order to avoid that conflict. And so if the rest of council's in agreeance, I'd like to ask the city manager to work with the city attorney, making sure we don't have to change any codes and address that succession plan.
We have to, like motion.
Do, does that need a formal vote or do we just...
No, sir, if that's a wish as a council, I'm not sure that we have a mandated thing there, but we'll look at it and, and get back to you all probably at the next meeting, if there is. And, and, you know, honestly, I'm not sure that we have a formalized process, but if we don't, we'll at least put some bones together for it for you all to look at. And I think that that is a reasonable thing to have in any case. So if that's your desire, we'll look on it.
Well, I think it's, it's always best to plan for the worst and be prepared for the best. Maybe that's the wrong phrasing there, but obviously your recent illness caught us, you know, totally off-footed and really Rob had to do a lot of scrambling to get things pulled together, so he had access to certain things. But if it's formalized and put someplace, so if it should happen again for any reason, we'll be prepared.
All right, and for the record, I would like to thank Rob for the work he did. You know, it's really, he has a full plate every day, just being the public works director. And, you know, he really stepped up, as did Courtney, you know, provided a great amount of additional service to the community and to the city council. And I personally appreciate that, keeping things on a even keel, and they did a really good job at it. So, you know, kudos to them for that. And, yeah, I do think that succession planning, just in general for municipalities, I'd say normally is a shortfall because most don't, you know, don't, don't have that level of anticipation, but it's better to be proactive than reactive. So we will definitely get to work on that.
Well, I, I think multiple tiers too, just because it was evident like when, when you were sick and then if Rob ever had to be out, making sure we have kind of down to the last person, just making sure that everybody knows, no matter what, who needs to step up to the plate. And that way, we're just, our bases are covered with that. And I think we, I mean, hopefully, we've covered enough with the finances and how to get access to that stuff. I think maybe it's just more making a solid succession plan in place, so.
We'll work on that.
So do I read this motion now?
Sorry, we'll, I don't know if you can motion go on that.
Oh, you're right, go ahead.
I move to go into executive session pursuant to CRS Section 24-6-402-4F for personnel matters and pursuant to CRS Section 24-6-402-4E. I, determining positions relative to matters that may be subject to negotiations, developing strategy for negotiations, and instructing negotiators with respect to the hiring of a new city of Montevista Police Chief.
Second.
Nita?
Councilor Lorenz?
Aye.
Councilor Schlebach?
Aye.
Councilor Martinez?
Aye.
Mayor Proton Trader?
Aye.
Motion carries?
At this time, we will take a short break and council will move to executive session, so I would ask you all to clear the room, please.